Thank you. So I will call this Board of Selectmen meeting in Millville, Massachusetts to order at 7:07 PM on December 6, 2021. We are going to go a little bit out of order just because we have some special guests. So I'm actually going to skip to 6A and we will start with Senator Fatman and then after him represents, so we'll give a quick update. So Senator Fatman, over to you. And thank you for joining us this evening. It's really nice of you to join our meeting. Brian? Senator Fatman, are you ready to give your update?
Absolutely. Thank you, Madam Chairwoman for... Are you able? Can you hear me?
Now we can, yeah. Now we can.
Okay. Sorry about that. I don't know what was going on there, but thank you, Madam Chairwoman, for inviting me. And Representative Soder, as you're probably aware, the legislature has, over the course of the last several weeks, been debating the federal American Rescue Plan money. And that is about a $4 billion document. On Friday, that was resolved between the differences of the House and the Senate and sent to the governor's desk, where I believe it still sits. He has 10 days to review it from the time it reaches his desk. And I haven't been able to see the news too much today, so I don't believe he signed it into law. But I did talk to a member of his staff just about vetoes and what might be taken out of it. The reason why that was such a compelling interest for me is based on a conversation that I had had with Peter and yourself, Madam Chair. I know that you were interested in trying to obtain some money for the town for a salt shed. We were successful in being able to get $75,000 for that capital improvement project. So the good news is, I expect that to be delivered to the town of Millville, very similar in fashion to the money we were able to secure for the ambulance back when you communicated that with us. I remember very fondly, one of the last meetings before the pandemic happened was, you know, that meeting of the Capitol Planning Board with Rep. Soder and myself. And we basically said, hey, minus some sort of outstanding crazy event like a recession or whatever, we thought we could get some money. And then, of course, the pandemic hit a few months later. But the good news is, I think that there is another $2 billion of money that the legislature hasn't taken on. And, you know, the hope is that sometime in the spring or into the summer, we might take on some of that debate and legislation. And we will hopefully be able to help the town with some other priorities. So the good news tonight is we've obtained the $75,000 sitting on the governor's desk. And we expect them to sign it into law, and then we'll work with you in order to get that money.
Great. So helpful. When Peter and I meet all the time, we just say how much support we have from you and Representative Soder. And it's really amazing. And we really appreciate that help. And I'll be... I just can't say thank you enough, really. It's just what it is. And actually, Brian has a new baby, too. He sent me some pictures. So how old is the baby?
Actually, he is seven days and a few minutes old. He was born a week ago at 6:43.
Congratulations. What's his name?
His name is Grady Walker. So we just, we need him to eat a little bit more. He needs to live up to that Batman name because he's lost the power since moving home. But we're working on it.
Well, congratulations on the new baby.
Thank you.
Todd, Andrew, any question for Senator Fatman before we move over to Representative Soder? Nope. Okay. Wait, Senator Fatman, I know with a one-week-old baby, you are beyond busy. So if you need to drop, absolutely understand. But thank you for joining us tonight. Representative Soder, over to you.
Hi. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can.
Okay, great. Thank you for having me, Madam Chair and the board. It's great to be before you. Happy holidays, Merry Christmas, and all that great stuff. As Senator Fatman told you about that, we also secured in the Opera Bill and the air market is still there. And we're assured that, we're pretty assured that the governor is gonna hopefully keep some of these things up there. There's $45,000 that's gonna be going to the elementary school in Millville to improve the outside mezzanine area that you might see when you walk through the door there. It's to revitalize the area, to turn that into outdoor classrooms, outdoor mezzanine area, or something where the students can have an opportunity to focus. And one of the things we learned during the pandemic is that the outdoor classroom concept is one that is a kind of an exciting and accepted to students, and they relate well to it. So the principal there had a very good idea that was kind of on the horizon. And I know that's not something that's a priority, but it was something that was COVID-related, that we could use the money for, in this Opera money that everybody and the chair of the House Ways and Means thought was a great idea. And so that was secured in the budget, in this legislation, in this Opera legislation. We're very excited about where we're at moving forward. And we now have a transportation bill that has passed the federal government. And now is, you know, passed, signed on the president's desk. So we're gonna be hearing a lot more about that transportation bill. And in that transportation bill, there's a lot of water infrastructure money, plus water drinking money. So we're gonna be paying close attention. My office is pulling that all apart. My interns are pulling that bill apart. We're working with the congressman. If you haven't known this yet, if you don't know this yet, Congressman Auchincloss is actually going to be getting Millville into his district. So you'll no longer have Congressman McGovern. So when Congressman Auchincloss gets reelected, he will be running in Millville and Blackstone. So he's a great congressman. I speak highly of him because he's very active. And he's very big on trying to fight, navigate the funding for his district. So I look forward to working with him, looking forward to working with him. I really want to get the Kempton Road drinking water problem solved, which affects both Uxbridge and Millville. And I also want to get drinking water, as Peter will tell you, to that school. And so we're gonna be paying very close attention to that. We're gonna put some focus on that so that we don't have to put the burden on taxpayers of Millville or Uxbridge on that Kempton Road problem. So we are gonna be focusing on a lot of that. Like the Senator said, we still have $2 billion in Opera money that we'll be looking at in spring. And we'll certainly be advocating for some projects that we couldn't get this time around for all of our towns. So every port good things. We're in a, you know, good situation right now. And we just hope that we can kind of battle down some of these cases and things like that so we can still kind of get out of this pandemic and get things somewhat back to normal. And try to get things moving again like we want them to in a normal, normal way, I guess. I guess is the best way to say it. So that's really all I have. You know, we're very excited and we keep putting Millville as a priority. And we understand that you have needs and we are definitely focused on the needs of Millville.
So again, same level of thanks, Representative Soder. The attention that we get from you and Senator Fatman again is always appreciated. And again, Peter and I talk about all the time, like just how great it is to have this level of support. So Andrew and Todd or Peter, do you have anything else for Representative Soder before we go?
Just a great thanks, big thanks.
Yeah.
No problem. My pleasure.
Incredible. Just incredible.
We're gonna keep working hard for all of you, so.
Noticed.
Much to your daughter, too.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Appreciate that.
We'll let you go, Representative Soder, since I know you have a little something at your house tonight. I hope your daughter does really well at Nationals. We all wish her...
Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you very much. Talk to you soon.
Okay.
Yeah, goodbye.
Okay. And then we are going to jump to 5A for Assessors Tax Classification Hearing. I see we have David and Paul here for that.
Good evening. How is everyone?
Oh, living the dream, David. How about...
Hanging in there, I hope. You know, it's been a crazy couple of years, for sure. Did everybody get the document? So I'll probably just share my screen as we kind of just go through it.
That would be great.
Like I did last year. And feel free to stop me at any point if there's any questions. Everybody see that all right?
Yes.
All right, so... Once again, we are at our classification hearing. So we're in steps six, seven, and eight in setting a tax rate. Right on time, which is great. Peter and I've had some exchanges back and forth, hoping to get everything put together, and we did. So good to everybody for all their hard work. So I'm just gonna read the few of the highlights to discuss. So what is our levy? A levy is the amount of property taxes to be raised. The levy amount is determined by the budget. The total amount of approved budget less revenues from other sources, like motor vehicle excise, municipal fees, and state aid is the amount raised from property taxation. So what we've calculated for the estimated levy for fiscal '22 is $5,479,320. This is a 2.92% increase over last year's levy of $5,323,833. What is the levy ceiling? The levy ceiling is the 2.5% of the full value of the town. This year, Millville's aggregate value of eight, oh, can't talk to me, aggregate valuation, So the town cannot levy taxes in excess of $9,657,718. This next item should be no shock to really anybody. New growth revenues are down. I've seen it in all of our communities with COVID. Construction material costs shortages and price increases. Just not a lot happened during the past year. So our new growth revenues for fiscal '22 are at $28,048.
So that translates to $1,856,254 in new value?
Yes, thank you. What is our levy limit, also referred to as the maximum allowable levy? Levy, this is calculated by adding the 2.5% from the previous year's levy limit plus new growth. For the present fiscal year, exceeding that can only be done by an override. So our certified maximum allowable levy for fiscal '22 is $5,332,243. So subtracting our... Sorry, wherever our total levy was, from what we're at, our actual levy is excess levy capacity. So we only have $614.95 of excess levy capacity. So this is a nice little easier chart to kind of break down the numbers. And I apologize, I see two typos here. This should read 21 and this should read 22.
Okay.
So we always start with the prior fiscal year levy amount, which was the $5,174,824. We add in the prop 2.5, which is 2.5% of that number. Add in our new growth. And this is our subtotal. Our excluded debt is down. We only have $147,692 of excluded debt left. And then there's our maximum allowable levy number. A breakdown of our valuations in town. So residential is still the bulk of where we're getting our taxes in town. Just shy of 93% of the total valuation in the community, as you can see here. So what does that mean and how does that translate into shifting tax burdens? Well, considering that we have 93% of everything coming from the residential class, if we wanted to keep the average tax bill the same as last year, we would have to shift 37% to the commercial industrial base that we have in town, which would result in a tax rate of $20.70, which I don't think would be, small amount of commercial properties we have in town, they would stick around too long if the tax rate remained. And to keep in mind, too, I know we don't have a lot, but it does affect the folks that have chapter lands, that are receiving that discount. Chapter lands are considered commercial property and we have to pay that $20.70 tax rate. So what are we looking at for proposed tax rates? So we're coming down. The levy overall didn't go up that much and values did. So we have a proposed tax rate of $15.11, down from $15.93 in fiscal '21. Valuations overall on the residential class are up 9% from last year. Very strong real estate market out there, as everybody knows, and it's continuing to be that way. Only thing that's gonna slow it down is if our interest rates go up. And then you're gonna start seeing everything shift, but I haven't heard anything on that front. So fingers crossed, we're still gonna have a strong market. So our average single-family valuation is gonna increase from fiscal '21 to 337.3 from 309.9 in fiscal '21. And you can see, based on the proposed tax rate, the average single-family valuation, which is our fictitious single-family value, this is just all the single-family values in town divided by the number of single families, is where we get this from. That'll go up only $160 for the whole fiscal year. So not bad. It's around 50 cents a day. So based on all the information in how little commercial we have in the community, it's the Board of Assessors' recommendation that we maintain single tax rate in town in Millville. And I open it up for any questions if you have any.
No, not for me. I think this makes a lot of sense to keep the tax rates the same. Hoping people will be happy that the impact is only about $13 a month. I just did some quick math in my head. So that's really not that much. It should feel like last year's tax bill, which is good.
Yes.
So I guess that's it. Andrew or Todd, any questions for you? Nothing? Okay. Well, this will be quick then. So... The selectmen read below verbiage at the meeting. So I'll just read this and then we'll be done. I don't know, David or Paul, do we need to do anything else?
No, you just make a motion with that little paragraph there. And then officially close the meeting. Well, I think you have to open it up to public if there are any discussion. And then close the meeting.
Okay. Well, I guess so, since we are a few minutes ahead of our 7:30 start for our next agenda item. If anyone has any questions, please put them in the chat and Alex will let us know. But in the meantime, I will make a motion that the Millville Board of Selectmen votes in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40, Section 56, has amended the percentage of local levy tax, local tax levy, which will be borne by each class of real and personal property relative to setting the fiscal year 2022 tax rates and set the residential factor at 1, with a corresponding CIP shift of 1, pending certification of the town's annual tax cap, annual tax recap by the Massachusetts Department of Revenue. And I'm looking for a second.
Second.
Oh, Andrew, Todd beat you by like one second. Alex, did any questions come in?
Nope, no questions yet.
Okay. So I was gonna count the questions part of discussion. So Andrew and Todd, any other discussion? Peter, anything? No? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Easy, easy. Thank you, David and Paul, for joining us.
Have a great night.
Thanks, you too.
Have a good night, all. Go on to livestream.
Okay, sounds good. Okay, so skipping around again, we are at 6E. And so I see Tom is here from the zoning board and also chair of the Building Inspector Search Committee. So Tom, I'll turn it over to you to give the team a quick update.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for inviting me today, as well as the other Board of Selectmen and anyone who may be streaming or watching at this point. The Building Inspector Search Committee had their first meeting on August 17th and our last meeting to date as of November 30th. Through that time, we did a search for candidates for the building inspector position. We had a great team, great committee that worked hard and diligently through the process to find candidates through multiple sources that we thought would be valuable to the town. So I want to just take a moment to thank, I know some people know who the committee were, but may not. But I want to take a moment to thank the committee members, which was Ken Tubman, Pam Maloney, Kristen Foodie, Richard Bremlis, Peter Caruso, obviously, and also you, Madam Chair, Jennifer. Thank you very much for all the work on it. The committee did have four interviews. And one did drop and then one, based upon other reasons, did not decide to go forward with the process as well. That gave us with the two candidates, we feel now that are good candidates for the inspector position. Both of them will be introduced tonight, this evening, to you. So at this point, would you like an introduction to the first candidate?
Yes, that would be great.
I think, believe joining us in here right now is Mr. Joseph Fitzpatrick. Excuse me for unlying the last name, but, and Joseph, I believe you go by Joe. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So Joseph Fitzpatrick is one of the two candidates that the BISC decided to move forward to the Board of Selectmen. I believe Peter may have forwarded some of the faculty information to you. So Madam Chair, I think I will turn this to you at this particular time.
Okay, great. So, um... Sorry, I was just opening a document that had some questions. So I think, just take Andrew and Todd and Peter, just let me know. Peter, let me know if I'm speaking incorrectly, but just give Andrew and Todd update. So one thing to the Building Inspector Search Committee, and we discussed this, where we ask kind of technical questions of all the candidates, like, what do you do in this scenario, like if someone wants to make an update to a load-bearing framework or something like that? All the technical questions were answered, shockingly, very, very similarly. So it was kind of interesting to see that a lot of the candidates had a lot of the, all similar baselines of knowledge around what it means to be a building inspector. But I don't know if you want to ask any of those questions. Certainly, we can go through some of those documents. I had a couple other questions I thought might be helpful to ask Joe and to kind of walk him through 30 minutes. So we'll end at 8:03 with Joe, just to be fair. And if we need to go a little longer, we can. Peter and I talked about that earlier. If we needed 15 minutes, then we could just have Lincoln join at 8:15 and go until nine. So it shouldn't be a super big deal. But I thought we could have Joe introduce himself, give a little bit of information on his background. And then I could start asking some of the questions that I had for Joe. And then Andrew and Todd, you could jump in. And Peter, certainly, if you have any, you could jump in. Does that seem like a reasonable way to move forward? Everyone's nodding yes? Okay, perfect. So Joe, thank you for joining us tonight. I'll turn it over to you. If you'd like to just tell us a little bit about yourself and your background in terms of being a building inspector.
I'd like to thank you for having me tonight, meet with you. My background is, done a lot of building, probably three-plus years, started it, well, a little more than that, I guess. I started around 16 in building. I've done stick frames, modular homes, commercial, residential, pretty much from the ground up. Done excavation all the way through actually framing it and doing all the steps along the way myself. I currently am a local inspector down at the town of Attleboro. There's 45,000 people there. I handle all the day-to-day inspections in the field, go out and check them, make sure they're compliant. And of course, handle the complaints that might come in and address them. I also have 10 to 15 years, I believe it is, on the Board of Zoning Board of Appeals in Douglas. In the past, I've chaired it. Very familiar with the zoning aspects of the job. Other than that, I live in Douglas. I have two daughters. They're both grown. I have two grandkids. And that's pretty much it. If you want me to do anything else, I can answer for you.
I have a couple of questions. Some of these might be repeats from what you answered in the executive session interview, but some might be new ones. But I thought we would start with... Tell us, like, what are your goals and objectives and long-term view of the role? And what I'm looking for there is like, so we're looking for someone who's gonna be here a little bit? I don't want to have to do this every other year, although Tom has been great to work with. I'm sure he's not looking to chair this committee every other year also. So we're just wondering, what's your view on that?
Well, that's it. I mean, I don't like to move around too much. And I try to, first of all, I do the best job I can do with the abilities I have. I don't plan on going anywhere. I mean, but again, that's a two-sided sword. So I do my job in a professional manner. I try to stick to the actual code, what it calls for. And you do have some leeway, as far as the code, as a building inspector, you can make certain judgment calls. And that's where my knowledge will come in, to say, yeah, okay, we can do this. And it's not gonna take away from the intent of the code. My biggest thing is to try to work things out. I'm not a type of person to say, okay, I'm gonna draw a line in the sand and that's it. This is what we're gonna do. I'd rather try to work this out ahead of time, and both way, an agreement that, okay, this is how we're gonna proceed to... I'd rather try to work this out ahead of time and both way in agreement that, okay, this is how we're gonna proceed to alleviate whatever problem there was, okay? That's how I handle my job now. Again. I have never had to be, go to court for any, any cases that I've been on, so. I think that speaks a little bit for how I handle myself.
Great. Um, so similar to that, can you tell us about a time when you had a disagreement and how you worked to resolve it?
Yeah, I, I had a builder that. We had a code call and it was in a bathroom and it's, it's a window adjacent to a wet area. And it calls for tempered glass. I called him out on it, says the code calls for it. He said, well, I don't interpret that way. It's okay. So here's what we'll do. We've got a hold of the ICC. We've got their, uh, impression on it. And. We. Called two different people on the ICC. Of course, we got one answer that was one way, one's the other way, so we said, okay, how about if we do this? Instead of making you go out and buy sashes and so forth. There is a three M film that you can put on the window, which is a security film, which will act in the same manner as that, but it's a lot less. And he said that was fine and we agreed and that was it.
Okay, and you actually already answered one of my other questions, which is tell us about a time that you've been to court, but you've never been to court. As a building inspector, um, and how long have you been a building inspector?
I've been down there just about two and a half years down there.
So in two and a half years, no court appearances?
Right.
Okay. So I have more questions, but I hope I get the ball rolling for Andrew and Todd. Do you have a question you'd like to ask Mr. Fitzgerald? Fitzpatrick, sorry. I keep saying Fitzgerald.
It's happened all my life.
Andrew, do you have anything?
Um, yeah, so I'm looking at your resume and currently you're working at a, another. As a builder for a, a company. Would you intend to continue doing that as building inspector?
As a builder?
Yeah, it says that you're working as a builder for ProBuild Construction LLC.
Andrew, that's my company, ProBuild, and I'm actually in the process now of, uh, shutting that down.
Okay.
So that's, that's my own company that I run.
Okay, so this would be, um, your only occupation?
Right.
Okay. In the, um, north, in the Attleboro Building Department, how many people are in that department at the moment?
Uh, there is, uh, two girls in the office and we have three inspectors, one's a commissioner, one's a, uh. Plan examiner, and then I handle everything in the field.
So obviously Millville's much smaller than Attleboro. Um, would you be able to work with much less staff and do basically a little bit more?
Yeah, I mean, again, I, uh, a company owner. You do what you gotta do to make sure everything keeps flowing. Even in the Attleboro job. Um, I'm usually there earlier in the morning. I'll pull the stuff off the computer, I get my route set up, what I'm gonna do. Wait and see what comes in on the phone, and then we go out and I'll do the morning run. I'll come back around noon time, pick up whatever's came in in the morning, we do the afternoon run. And we've been able to cut the inspection times to a four-hour window. So. What I gotta do to get, make sure everybody's taken care of, and again. Given the town what it needs to also, you don't want to shortchange them.
Andrew, do you have anything else, or Todd, do you have any questions?
I have any questions. All the questions seem to be answered on this resume video that I would ask, so.
Okay, um, so I had another question, um, so I think that having a positive relationship with the town is important. Although the flip side of that is, you know, I think we all kind of recognize that this is somewhat of a, a thankless job. Right? You're going in and telling people like, oh, this looks okay, and if everything looks okay, that's great. But when things are not looking okay, that's when things can be a little bit more sticky. So how do you kind of ensure that you continue to have a positive relationship with those in town?
Again, if you point out what the deficiencies are as far as the code goes and. Uh, a lot of people will see that you're not just pulling something out of the air, that you actually have some groundwork for what you were, you know, calling out. And the other thing is, uh, sometimes I'll get people who don't, don't have permits. And I explain to them, it's in your best interest to do the permits, because this goes on to your, your, uh, field card. And it shows that what updates you've done on your property, if you ever decide to get rid of it, it's recorded with the town, so it's your best interest to do it. And I usually have pretty good results of that.
Okay. Andrew, I had a couple more questions unless, do you have anything else?
No, you can continue.
Okay, um. So, Joe, can you tell us about a time when you made a mistake and how you went about resolving it?
Try, um, I mean, everybody makes mistakes, I can't. Uh, come up with something right off the bat, but. I try to, if it's something that I'm not sure with, I usually tell them, hey, this is, this looks okay, or it doesn't look okay, but I'm, I get back, I'm gonna check it. And if there is a problem, then I will call you and tell you. And again, we, we got a four-hour window. It doesn't really affect them at all. I just try to make sure that I don't make mistakes, because if you do, it's gonna cost somebody some money, so.
Okay. Um. And then. If we were to appoint you. Um, it would be tonight or two weeks from tonight. How long after that would you be able to start?
Um, I could start whenever you let me know, because, I mean, you advertise this as an eighteen hours a week, so it's a part-time position, I, I assume.
So you'd be able to kind of phase out in Attleboro while ramping up here, is that what your, your plan would be?
Well, I mean, what's the hours that, again, you advertise it as eighteen hours a week?
Yep.
So that's a part-time position?
Yes.
I've already talked to the people in Attleboro and they said, yeah, it's not a. Of a. Millville without a problem for eighteen hours. I, I can't quit a full-time job with benefits. For eighteen hours a week, that's just. Wouldn't work.
Okay, so you'd be doing this in the Attleboro position?
That's correct.
Okay. Can you tell us a little bit how you plan on balancing that?
Um. I could do inspections in the morning, I could do them, uh, when I get out of, out of, uh, work, which I could be in Millville around. Four thirty every day, I could get my inspections done. As far as any paperwork, I just do that at, at night when I'm there and. Also give you a, uh, night that, like a Thursday night and be open to a certain amount of time that somebody's gonna see me, they can see me impressing that night.
So what if someone said, hey, I need something done and they were only available during business hours, like on a Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, how would you balance that?
I could, I could balance that. I've already talked to my commissioner and he said that wouldn't be an issue.
Okay, oh, so your commissioner knows you're applying for this role and you're able, okay?
Back said, if you wanted to talk to him, I could give you his, so.
Oh, okay, great, no, that's helpful. All right. Andrew, Todd, Peter, Tom, any other questions? Or Joe? I were like cruising through this interview. Peter was like, we're gonna need more than thirty minutes. I'm like, I think thirty minutes is probably about right, just because. The questions and everything that we asked were pretty enough, as part of the search committee were very, very thorough, so.
One quick question, some clarification, um. If a problem had a, did arise in Attleboro, would it be, and like that, let's say it went to a court hearing, would it be the commissioner that would be going?
Uh, depends. Uh, the commissioner would handle a lot of it, but if it's, if it's an inspector himself, then you would have to go there and testify, obviously, if, if you're direct, you're directly the one that's involved.
And there's been no instances of that happening in Attleboro at all?
None.
Yeah, I, what, I, could you clarify that, Joseph, and tell me that there's been no court cases in Attleboro?
Oh, there's been court cases, but nothing that's involved me.
Thank you.
Had the court cases involved. A building that you were involved in the inspection in or anything like that?
No, because the last one, I believe it was, well, it's, it has nothing, none of the cases had to do with anything that I was working on.
Okay.
There's, uh. Previous stuff or. Stuff that's. They've got to take them across for people that didn't comply with certain things, whatever, but it was, it was nothing that I had personally involved with.
Joe, have you had situations where you've, uh. Uh, determined something and the person has challenged it or appealed it to the zoning board in Attleboro? Have you had to deal with that type of situation?
Not in Attleboro. I've dealt with it in, in Douglas where they challenge it to us, but yeah.
Yeah, when you were on the zoning boards, sure, yep. And just FYI, I gave all your materials to the Board of Selectmen here, so they've seen your answers to all your questions, your resume. As well as the questions that the search committee did ask, and so that's for Joe's edification as well as the public.
Yep, and the reference information as well. Okay, well, I don't want to keep Joe here for all that and asking him questions. I hate wasting people's time, so. Todd and Andrew, do you have any, everything you need to evaluate Joe?
Quick question, I'm not entirely sure how to phrase it, but if you were to summarize how you go about enforcing the building code, how would you put it?
Well, your first thing you do is you give a, uh, if you find a violation, you would do a, uh. What I do is I write it down, okay, and give them a written notice for us. If that, if they continue, then you would give them a stop work order. And at that point, then you would, uh. That's where it kind of gets a little messy, because that's when you. All this, you explain to them, hey, look, this is, this is gonna be changed because of this, you know, it's not just, you're gonna change this. I, I let them know why. Here it is in the chapter. It's what's telling me that this is what's gonna be done. And again, with the experience that I've had, I tell the guys. This is, you know, it's not gonna work for whatever reason it might be, whatever. It's, I'm having any problems, so.
So Joe, you give them a written statement, though, saying this is what you're, the code you're violating first?
In other words, I would say, okay, um. You, you have a building code violation. We have inspection slips. I write it down, that inspection slip, so when I come up to do an inspection. It either passes or fails or something like that, and then in the bottom I have an area I can write in there, so I'll write down what I found is, is questionable, okay? And then from there. They want to know where it is in the book, I show them, okay, here's the code. If, again, if they just ignore it, then you give them a work stop order until you get it resolved. You don't want to keep going and then have another problem, just compounding, compounding, so.
Okay, and typically if they have that issue, and so you've written in the slip like this is what's going on. Is there a set period of time that they have to resolve that? Is it five days, ten days, and you go back? What's the process for resolution?
Uh, no, I don't give them a, a set period, but they have it, that's in there, and then when we log it into the computer. That, uh, operation along the way will not be signed off. So if they want to ignore something, say it's an installation and they didn't get that signed off and they, they continued on. At the end of, the end of the day, you're not gonna get a C of O because that was not signed off. So it's, you know, they understand that. Yeah, I'm not, I'm not gonna come down and get in a fight with you, but you're taking all the risk and you want to, you want to go that route, it's, it's, you know, up to you. It's your, on your, uh. Knowledge of what you're doing.
Okay.
So have projects that have been started with permits pulled and all that, not been completed, but like signed off and all that? That, like, the, the work was done necessarily, but it wasn't actually, like, approved or signed off?
Well, there's, there's two ways to do it. If it's a, if it's a job that's under construction control, then the architect can sign off for that inspection. Okay, because he's, he's gonna verify that it was done correctly. The second thing you can do is if it's something of a. Not a major issue, but, uh, something on a minor issue, you can get an affidavit for it. And then you have them sign that they, it's been done according to the code. And you can deal with it that way. If you're comfortable with who's doing the work and you kind of know what their work is and they just forgot a step or something, that is another way around it.
So there, there are basically workarounds for if the building inspector doesn't. Sign off on something?
If he doesn't what?
Sign off on like, let's say, putting in the installation. If he doesn't sign off on that, there's workarounds.
Oh, there, there's ways around it. I mean, you can have, um, again, we don't like to try to get into where you got somebody tearing something apart that's already done, unless you, you have to do it, I mean. It's an electrical code, that's a little different with their mandates that come out of Boston. Uh, somebody finishes a ba- a basement. And they never get any sign off, the electrical code wants them to open all the walls up to see all the wires. So, I mean, there is some mandates that, you know, we, we're just tied to it, we can't, we can't get around it, that's just the way it is. Is there other ways? Yeah, I think there's other ways you could test a wire and to make sure it's correct, but that's, again, that's out of my wheelhouse, that's, that's the electrical board and. We all have our specialties that we try to take care of. But answer your question, yeah, there is ways around it that you can, you can work things out. There's always a way to work something out.
Joe, could you clarify for me just your, your work hours in Attleboro, which I think you're gonna continue, your plan is to continue? And try and work this around that schedule, what's?
Right, I'm usually there eight to four. Eight to four is what I'm usually there.
And that's Monday through Friday?
Monday through Friday.
Monday through Friday, yep. Thank you.
And then just to piggyback on that, like, from us, so would you do like Monday? Wednesday through Friday there and Tuesdays here in Millville or something like that?
Uh, again, I would have to see what, what the, it entails. I mean, if you've got busy days or whatever, then obviously you make your adjustments around that. Um, but to get set days, I don't want to say, yeah, you guys, okay, Tuesday, I'm gonna take care of that, and Tuesday happens to be a slow day. You know, I'd rather stuff comes in, you take care of it as it comes in, get it done and keep it moving.
Okay. I guess the concern is to hear that you're in Attleboro Monday through Friday, eight to four. How would you have a daytime hour for Millville?
Uh, again, I could do the inspections in the morning or I could do them in the evening and also give you an evening, uh. Where if somebody had to meet me, they could, I'd be there later and they could meet me.
Yeah, so I think it even, or one night a week would be helpful, because I've seen people ask for that. But I do think you would need to have a day available as well on a weekly basis. Is that a problem?
I'd have to, I'd have to talk to, again, my commissioner. To see how that's gonna work.
Okay.
Because again, you've got to understand my standpoint. Uh, being eighteen hours a week, there's no benefits, there's no nothing with this job, I. I would assume, because that's not, doesn't kick in until twenty hours.
Right.
Oh, I mean, to walk away from. That side of it to make less, it just. Makes sense on my end.
Mm-hmm.
But I've done some thinking about it, and if you make this work, then that's.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions for Joe before we let him go? Did someone just leave?
Uh, Peter's screen just turned off and on.
Screen went off and on.
Oh, okay, it's like something moved. Okay. All right, well, Joe, I guess we can let you go.
Okay.
And thank you for joining us tonight, and we'll be following up.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Have a good night.
Thanks you too. Okay. Tom, introduce the next candidate.
Yes, I'd like to introduce the next candidate of the, the Building Inspector Search Committee. Um, believe it would be a good candidate for the position of the Building Inspector in Millville is Mr. Lincoln Barber.
Okay. So, Lincoln, how we handled this previously is the candidate kind of like just introduced themselves, said a few things. Um, so I guess if there's anything you want us to know, and then, um, they have all the questions that, and everything, all the work that they did as part of the, um, Building Inspector Search Committee, which, um, for example, Todd was like, I have no questions, because these are all the questions I would ask. So, the okay questions from Todd, Todd, O'Neal. That's the same thing happened for the last person, so you're being treated exactly as everybody else. Um, but I'll kick it over to you if there's anything you want to say, and then I have a couple of questions to kick it up.
Uh, good evening. I think I'm fairly well-known in the community. I am a certified building commissioner in the state of Massachusetts, have been for, um. Four and a half plus years. I've been the Building Commissioner in the town of Millville since July of two thousand seventeen. Been responsible for the operation of the department. During that time, in two thousand twenty, February two thousand twenty. The administrative assistant left, uh, her position here, and I have been responsible for every activity that the building department does in the town of Millville since then. Just to clarify something that seems to be a common misconception, and I have to admit, I shared that misconception. A building inspector's job is, um, far more than performing inspections. And in the case of the town of Millville, I would say that part of the job is probably down in the five to ten percent range. There's an awful lot of interaction with the, um. Community and the permitting, uh, and businesses that are doing business in town. And that takes up the vast majority of time. So, I have extensive involvement in community government. I was on the zoning board of appeals, I was, uh, on the planning board, et cetera, et cetera. I also ran my own construction company for thirty-seven years. So, I have a fair amount of experience. I don't know if you'd like me to embellish on that, but I think that's.
I'm okay with it. I don't know, Todd or Andrew, if you have any other questions for Lincoln based on his background? Okay, um. So, the first question I had, Lincoln, um, in terms of like your long-term view of this role. Just because, not that I don't enjoy working with Tom, this isn't an exercise that we want to be going through every year, every other year, so is this a role that you would anticipate doing for a few more years anyway, if you were to be reappointed?
I, I have enjoyed, for the most part, being, um. Employed as the building commissioner in the town of Millville. It's, I made a conscious decision four to five years ago to scale back from day-to-day construction and, uh, try and use my expertise and knowledge to, uh, progress into more of a management role. I took the, uh, required testing. And became certified as a local inspector. And then improved on that with, uh, the testing for building commissioner. There's quite a bit of difference between local inspector, which is more of a focus on the nuts and bolts, if you will, of the building industry, and the ability to, uh, inspect work in the field. And then, when you get into the commissioner's role, there's a lot more emphasis on, um. Managing a department, managing individuals, working with a wide variety of professionals, and the legal aspects, what your responsibilities are, what, uh, the rights and responsibilities are of the town or municipality. Um, how to conduct yourself, uh. In regards to the law and when and if necessary, uh, how to prepare and go to court. So, I envisioned, when I started out doing this for quite a while, and I'd like to continue to do that, barring, um. Situations like the one I found myself in for the last year and a half, I'd like to continue that.
Um, and you had mentioned, actually, as part of, like, your in introduction, that's a commonest conception that the majority of your job is, um, building inspections and things like that. Can you elaborate that and describe a little bit more of the day-to-day?
Uh, the town of Millville is a pretty small town. I, I find it difficult to envision when it ever became a full-time position. Historically, the, the town funded the building department, uh, two hours a week up until two thousand seventeen. You know, there was a, a change in emphasis in town government and a desire to have a more responsive and available to the community building department, and the hours were increased, and it went from in my opinion, kind of a wild, wild west situation, where anything goes, because there was no building presence in town. And the limited hours of, uh, availability of the building official made it pretty much impossible to do anything other than process applications and do inspections. They were all done, they being inspections, at the convenience of that individual who wasn't a resident of the community, and they were not done to, um. Make construction flow or accommodate people during normal business hours. I, I'm sorry, I've kind of forgotten what your question was, but I've, I've tried to make the department and myself a lot more available to people and businesses when businesses are open. And contractors who start their days early and have to make commitments to, uh, be in a certain place to get a day's pay in. And my, uh, geographic location being a mile down the street has enabled me to perform inspections early in the day or late in the day and make myself accessible to residents and businesses, uh, and in off-hours, uh, late in the day or hours when I wasn't here. I've tried to tailor the department's hours to the time the town hall was open and during COVID. To accommodate, uh, Mr. Crusoe and what he was trying to achieve in safety of personnel in the building. Conducted business from, you know, six in the morning until mid-morning, when other staff came in and then come back at six at night. And get things done until whenever, much to the chagrin of my wife, who wants to have dinner with me, so. Millville is, uh. It's not unique, but it's certainly by the nature of being a small town, I think the department has to be a little more flexible and responsible to the citizens and the businesses in order to enable people to conduct business on a you know, a reasonable timeframe. We are here to accommodate the public and the residents, and I've tried to make every effort to do that.
Okay. No, I think you answered my question, Lincoln. It was more, because you mentioned the day-to-day is not just all inspections. There's, that goes into the role.
I can elaborate on that a little. Day-to-day is, uh, we have a phone system set up, so all phone calls go into email. When I come in in the morning, I go through the emails. Some days, it's relatively light. Monday mornings, it's usually pretty, uh, impressive. You know, I keep a daily log on what comes in, if it's important, and respond to emails and phone calls. Some days, that is seven o'clock to quarter of eight. Some days, that's seven o'clock to eleven thirty. It depends on the complexity of the issues and the number of, uh, correspondence. And, to me, that's, you know, pretty much what the building department is about. There's a whole lot of people that want information or want you to process their requests, so they can come do business in Millville and do it in an efficient fashion. Uh, I currently schedule inspections for wiring, plumbing, gas. Uh, and those are done on Tuesdays and Thursdays, and all that comes through this office. Uh, I'm responsible for scheduling that and corresponding with the individual inspectors and the businesses requesting it, making sure those things are coordinated. You do payroll here. You, you. If you needed to run a small business, then that's what this job entails, and, and it's organize your time, be responsive to the immediate need. You can be in the middle of something and, and the town administrator comes in with an issue that needs to be dealt with, or you get a phone call, there's something in the field that needs to be dealt with. And so you drop what you're doing and you go out and deal with it. And if you get a phone call at, at, uh, two o'clock in the morning, because a tree fell through somebody's house in a snowstorm. You get out of bed, you put on your clothes, and you go respond to that, and the same is with a fire or anything else, so. I think I would find it a lot more challenging to want to do this job in, in a community that's, you know, uh, twenty minutes or forty minutes from my house, because, uh. I don't know how responsive I could be in that situation, in a timely fashion that accommodates the people involved.
So what exactly is your weekly availability? Uh, like, if you were to, like, generalize what hours each, each week you would work generally?
Well, I have had the, the town hall office hours from seven AM till noon, Monday through Wednesday. Um, the town hall is closed Friday. I have a second part-time job, which I do on Thursday. If need be, I can switch things around a little bit, but I think we have very good coverage on those three days. If, if I'm working with a contractor who's got an ongoing project and and he digs a hole on Monday and wants a footing inspection on Tuesday. Then that's what I do on my way into the office, and when we converse, if, if I ask him, what's your poor schedule for the foundation, and he says, uh, I'm hoping to do it, um. You know, Friday morning, then I need to go do an inspection Thursday afternoon, the first thing Friday morning, even though I don't have office hours and I'm not going to be in the town hall. I have met people on weekends, I've met people at night. I was recently at somebody's house at quarter of seven in the morning, because that's what was convenient for them. I live a mile down the road. Uh, anybody that's been, uh, an adult and had to go to work every day for X number of years, uh. Knows what it's like to try and work around their employment schedule and have to stay at home to meet the cable guy, because they want to change the box in the house, so. To me, I'm here to, to, uh, work with the public, and I try and make it happen at whatever hour of the day or the night, within reason.
Um, Lincoln, can you tell us about a time that you had a disagreement and how that was handled?
What, what, can you define disagreement for me a little more, please?
Yes. So, when you went to do something at someone, inspect something at someone's house, and you're like, this is not correct. And they said, no, it is. And you just said, no, it's not. And so how, how do you work through that?
And you don't really, or at least in my experience, you don't, you don't get a whole lot of no, it's not.
Okay.
Uh, I try and make my inspections when the contractor is at the job site. That's not always possible. A lot of jobs are small. They come and do their job, they call in for an inspection on the way home. You try and accommodate their schedule and go do one when you're on your way home, or you're on the way in in the morning. And they're not necessarily on the job site. If they're there, you communicate with them at the time and say, I've got an issue with this, and, and you have a discussion as to how you can, uh. Satisfy the code and, and enable them to continue on with the work, um. If they're not there, you, I try and make a phone call. I call them up and say, this is what I have an issue with. I can meet you out at the site, so we can go over it. Most people want to continue on and get the job done and have the customer happy, the building department happy, and get paid. It's my job to try and facilitate that any way I can, and rare is the the party, be it a homeowner or a contractor, that wants to pick a fight about anything. If they have an issue and it seems unresolvable to them, there's several avenues they can take. I, I can't say that, uh. A lot of things, much of anything comes to mind where we weren't able to work something through to continue on with the project. Uh, there's, there's a huge number of variables and, and little stories I could tell you. They all come back to the same point where the permit holder worked to resolve the issue because, um. The building code is the building code, and, and they're going to satisfy it. Whether it's for Lincoln or the state of Massachusetts, or some other third party.
Okay. And do you document for them, like, what the violation is to kind of make it easier for them to refer back?
Um, you, you know. Really. The idea is to, um, work together one-on-one and not clutter things up with paperwork and delays in time. It's have a, uh, on-the-spot conversation. This is where the issue lies. I had one today. I did a framing inspection on my way home. These guys thought they were all ready. I've been communicating with them all through the project. Um, a lot of, of the construction trade seems to be, well, they don't make me do this in such and such a community.
Yeah.
I can't speak for what they do everywhere else. I can speak to what the book says you need to do. And what's safe, what's going to last for the homeowner. So, uh, if you have a reasonable discussion. People typically want to work with you. If, you know, I've run into places where, um. People want to have an attitude, and, and you have to work at diffusing that situation. Sometimes you have to leave and have it on another day. Uh, you have to maintain a professional demeanor. There's money involved, there's time involved. People have other issues going on in their life that have nothing to do with the project, but they affect how they respond and, and deal with the situation at the time. You've got to work through all that, so. I think I have a pretty good, uh, approach to getting people to work with me and follow through with the code. You get an awful lot of well, what do you have to do in Millville? And the response is always, we do what the state requires, but there aren't any special rules in Millville, so.
Okay.
There are a, an awful lot of inexperienced unprofessional people in this trade. And they have, um, had a good place to work for a long time in the town of Millville, because there was no oversight. There was no in-the-field day-in, day-out president. There was very little inspection-wise, and, uh. I've tried to change that with the help of the other inspectors and the staff in the town hall, and I think there's been a big swing towards trying to get things done right, and the professionals that work in Millville are pretty pleased to see that, because they're not. are pretty pleased to see that because they're not competing against people that are unlicensed and uninsured and don't pull building permits and don't pull wiring permits, et cetera. So.
Okay. And I, one more question, and then um I'll turn it over to uh Todd and Andrew. Um can you tell us about a time you ended up in court and then what was the resolution there?
I was in court a week ago. I won't use any names. It was a zoning violation. Almost all court appearances have something to do with zoning violations, but not all.
Okay.
I um observed over a period of time a a business activity in town that needed a special permit. Special permits are granted by the planning board. I drafted a letter and um the business in question didn't have an in-town presence. They weren't set up. They were uh trying to get set up. So I had to go through the Secretary of State's office and find out what the corporation was that owned the property and what their business mailing address was and who their agent was. Um and I sent a certified or attempted to send a certified letter to that individual. The post office refused to because they didn't recognize that address. Uh at the same time, I drafted that letter. I did a little more research and went through some information that I had gained in my site visit to the Rhode Island Secretary of State's office and pulled a business address for the same individual in the state of Rhode Island and sent the same letter at at the same time to a business address in Rhode Island certified mail. Ultimately, that letter came back to me about three weeks later as undeliverable. So you have a business that has two corporations set up and both of them have the same business agent who in turn is the property owner uh and and address that the United States Post Office finds as undeliverable and returned to sender. So I typed up a second follow-up letter. We're now three or four weeks into this whole process. It takes a ridiculous amount of time to pursue things in paper. And I endeavor to send it out again uh to the same addresses because legally that's my responsibility. And I hand-delivered one to the property. When I did that, uh lo and behold, the property owner was there. A nice guy, very pleasant. We had a productive conversation and I thought things were resolved. A great deal of time goes by. I end up speaking with his attorney. We had phone conversations. We had face-to-face conversations. Uh the whole thing took two and a half months. I never got anywhere. I did get them to finally communicate with the planning board and apply for a special permit. The business activity did not diminish. I sent them a fine. Lo and behold, that got their attention and they agreed to pay the fine. Guess what? Never happened. On the day, uh when you write a fine ticket out, which is a legal document that the town of Millville drew up with the assistance of the court system, on the day of the hearing that the court system assigned, I still didn't have the fine. And my goal wasn't to collect money. It was to get the uh individual to go through the proper permitting process, and they had not initiated that process to the satisfaction of the planning board. I went to court. The um business owner was represented by counsel. The town of Millville was represented by myself. And at the end of the court process, the clerk magistrate ordered the town of Millville some of money in excess of the fine that was originally levied, oh, excuse me, less than the fine originally levied, more than what I and the uh business owner's attorney had agreed to because they hadn't followed through on anything. So he- here's two and a half months, a great deal of my time wasted, a bunch of his time wasted. And we end up in court because uh they chose not to act on what they had agreed to. I'm sure he has a slightly different view on the set of circumstances. The clerk magistrate found in favor based on the documents and my testimony for the town of Millville. I'd much rather spend my time welcoming a new business to Millville and helping them as I indicated in my letters, which Mr. Crusoe's read, how to get the process started and what they needed to do. I don't dictate. I just do my job.
Okay. Andrew and Todd, do you have any questions?
Um so one quick question. So if you were to basically explain how what your belief system is and how you enforce the the building code, so like.
Uh one of the things you learn when you're going through the commissioner's um portion of of testing is the importance and the responsibility of following the law with the proper documentation and being very consistent. And having been in courts more than once, I can tell you that what you have done in the past and what you were able to document and prove you have done in the past is very important as to how the court looks upon your actions. So my approach and my uh, I think you used the word velocity, is to be very consistent and follow the building code. I I do my darndest to work with people and accommodate their um shortcomings, their uh time schedules, their um difficulties. But ultimately, what I do today, I have to use as a uh a background for all decisions I make in the future. And and not just for what Lincoln Barber did, but for what the building department for the town of Millville does and how they're perceived in the future, whether I'm sitting in this chair or not, so. I I um I like to think I'm fair, but I do enforce the building code. Does that answer your question, Andrew?
Yes, thank you. Then another one would be, in the past, we've had problems mainly pertaining to your bedside manner, I think, as it's been put before. Has there been any work, I remember, or at least I think there was supposed to be some progress or some work. I don't know if that was ever taken up or how that went. Do you have anything on that?
Uh you I missed the first part of your question. I don't understand what you're asking me at all.
Okay. So in the past, there's been complaints or, you know, whatever, about how you handle interactions with people. Has, and I believe there was uh supposed to be, or at least there was talk of kind of working on that and fixing that. Has that taken place?
Has what taken place? Working on it?
Working on your your mannerisms to, you're you're kind of your customer service skills.
Um I I I think my customer service skills are are pretty good. I think if you um ask the people who listen to what happens as I interact with the public, both in person in the town hall and on the telephone, that most of them would agree with me. Uh I I think you're gonna find that most of the people that get down to an actual complaint and call the town hall, uh either Mr. Crusoe or one of the select people have a situation where they um undertook some work that they weren't permitted for or um you know, is in some fashion illegal. I have uh spoken with them and they don't like the fact that now they've got to um change what they're doing and conform to the town of Millville zoning bylaw or the the state building code. And so for some reason, the perception is if I complain loud enough into the right people, I can circumvent the whole process. And if I, as the uh zoning enforcement or the building inspector allow that to happen, then I've completely undermined what the position represents and what the town of Millville is trying to do in enforcement. So I try my darndest to be pleasant and work with people. Um but you never get anyone coming in to complain because they did something right. It's because they got caught doing something wrong and they don't wanna do it the right way. I I went through an extensive um I don't know what you wanna call it, other than an executive session about eighteen months ago, where there were a number of instances or complaints, if you will, that were addressed. Um I thought I did a fairly exhaustive explanation of what the building department and I had done in my position to uh as far as our involvement or my involvement in those situations. And at the end of that meeting, the um Board of Selectment took a a relatively immediate vote to reappoint me and a vote of of four to one. So those complaints were addressed at that time. My impression was that the board accepted my responses and thought they had credibility and my actions were correct. And they reappointed me. Uh uh I have corresponded with Selectman Gill in regards to improving the public perception. The town of Millville Personnel Bylaw says that they will um endeavor to train personnel, to retain personnel and um uh improve skills that seem lacking and a voice that I would be more than happy to uh participate in training if that was um what was felt necessary. And there was really no response to that at the time, so. I I I work every day to improve myself and communicate well and clearly and politely with the public. I don't think I would have stayed in business for forty years if I didn't. I don't know if that answers your question, but um no, there has been no training per se. And and I think Mr. Crusoe could probably best address whether there have been additional complaints that have come into the town hall.
No, no, that answers my question perfectly. Thank you.
Can I just ask a couple of questions of Lincoln? You know, one of the things you I've discovered or learned uh in his role or the role of the building commissioner. It's not about quick, go in and do inspections. There's there are a number of matters that seem to have a lengthy continuation uh because the projects are lengthy and or the issues are lengthy and you know, subject to interpretation and factual investigation and I don't know what else, but and and I and I don't wanna ask him to speak to some of those that are probably still open matters, but i- if Lincoln talked briefly, just as a, to help the, some of the members on the board here who might not have been around, uh talking about the MES boiler uh experience, because I thought that was a very good example of um you know, how things could get at, get, could get unsafe if not handled properly by the town and through the building department. Lincoln, just a little brief um summary of some of the challenges we encountered. You did work closely with me just to keep me informed and you know, I supported many of the choices you were making at the time to uh get to a good outcome at the end of the day.
Um I I have to say at the start that there was, there was, there was two people doing that job at the time. There was Lincoln Barber, the building commissioner, and there was Lincoln Barber, the resident in the town of Millville. Um the the school department hired a contractor to take on a fairly large project up at the school, part of which was remove the existing underground oil tank and put in a uh underground propane tank. It's uh as as the the previous um applicant, Mr. Fitzpatrick, I think his name was, he mentioned construction control. When a project is of a certain size, square foot, uh excuse me, cubic foot dimension in a commercial application, the building department has the discretion to insist that it become construction control, which we did in that case. And that means that the the contractor highest to hire a third-party uh licensed professional, which in this case is multiple engineers, to oversee and inspect the project as it goes along to make sure that it's being built to a specification and built to code. The original application lacked a great deal of information that should have been included. And that continued throughout the project. Uh, excuse me, I I uh as I said, I was a citizen. I was concerned about the um uh I'm sorry, the unprofessional preparation by the contractor hired by the the school department. I was concerned about the safety of the people in that building. And uh I I also felt a great deal of pressure to not create waves, get the thing done because it it's for the town. Um I had some very difficult meetings with people because the information was lacking. At at one point, we had a meeting in the cafeteria up at the school, which was um seventeen professionals on one side of the table and myself on the other side of the table. And I I spoke to, we need to work together as a team. We need to be responsive to what's missing and the issues that uh I'm bringing up and that you're not addressing so that this thing can go forward without interruption and everybody feels it's being done safe and properly. And a a great deal of things, you know, didn't get addressed in a timely fashion. And I put my feet down and I did cause things to be held up from time to time. And I did communicate with the general contractor, with Mr. Aaron Worth at the school and with the design team that the school system had hired and with some of the individual contractors. And I spent a lot of time talking with Peter and trying to make sure that I was being as um cooperative as I could and still maintain the safety of the kids at the school and the turn uh the town's long-term interests. That was a very difficult process because uh there was some adversarial relationship between myself and the design team, who are basically being exposed as unprepared and lacking um all the necessary things they needed to do, right up to and including going to the Board of Selectmen and getting a permit to put that tank in the ground, something nobody ever brought up until I brought it to Peter's attention. And then ultimately, he informed the Board of Selectmen. And and that delayed things. Um that's part of this job. It it's it's making tough decisions, standing by them when the heat gets incredibly hot and it's coming at you from all corners. Um and I think what I did was right and proper and and I had the support at the time of the town administrator. And that's why we got the job we did. And one of the references I gave to the Building Inspector Search Committee was the project manager for that. I don't know if anyone called him. I didn't prep him. I don't know what he said, but I'd be shocked if he didn't say that uh things worked well and and he enjoyed working with him. That's uh that's all I have to say about that one.
I I have a follow-up question to one of Andrew's questions, because since you um mentioned, Andrew talked about the bedside manner issue and the perception problem. So you did clarify on those events, uh an executive session in September, early September, late August last year. Um but I think, you know, you have your version events and they have their version events, and there's something in between. And I think, you know, when I spoke with Peter, there, you know, we talked about that, like people have different feelings about about those meetings or interactions. And I think to say that you have no role in that is concerning to me. Because what Because one, and one of my leadership classes, for example, they say, you know, pick a scenario. Where it's absolutely not your fault. And I was like, okay, you're stopped at a stop sign and someone runs you. Like, well, what could you do to avoid that? You know, you could not be there. You could do something else. You could run the stop sign, blah, blah, blah. So I think you're basically stating like, I am always perfect and I never do anything wrong and I have no idea why anyone would reach out.
No, no, that's not true at all.
Okay.
I don't agree with that, but, um. I, I. Yeah, I suppose there are two sides. If, um, you know, one of those eight things was a situation that had been brought to the attention of. Two selectmen, both of whom sat down with me. We discussed it at length. And they said, okay, now I understand what's going on. Uh, I, I support what you're doing. And I never heard about it again. Uh, a year goes by and that same issue circus, uh, surfaces again. As a complaint that was given to you. Um, at the time that that whole situation went down and was resolved. The resident hired an attorney and we sat down in the back room where Mr. Crusoe has his office, four of us. The husband, the wife and the attorney. And when it was all said and done, the, the residence attorney said. Yeah, Mr. Barber's right here. You have broken the law. We do need to satisfy his. Questions about what you've done and how you've done it. They did some research and were able to answer my questions to the satisfaction of the. Of the zoning bylaws of the state of Massachusetts. We were able to document that. So that it went in the file and there is no future question about it. And I think that there was a, uh, as, as the residence attorney said. Uh, a personality conflict there where the resident, uh, the husband. Had a, um. Let's just say a dominant male personality that he wanted to assert over me. And I had a job to do and tried to do it as politely and professionally as possible. If I was wrong, I find it hard to believe that the residence attorney. Would agree with me and ask their client to. Acquiesce to the, the request of the building department, provide the necessary information. Update the documentation that wasn't made available and that enabled us to go on, so. Yes, there's a perfect example of where there's two sides to a story. Uh, I, as it turns out, have to tell the same story three times. And it never really changed the outcome. Am I perfect? No. Do people get upset when I show up? Yes, I, I make sometimes a difficult situation because. I'm requesting you do something you don't wanna do. I can't back down because you're upset. I can just be polite and work with you as much as possible. No, I'm not perfect and I'm not gonna say that. And, and I can assure you, there's plenty of people that will attest to that. But I do endeavor very hard to. Do the right thing for the town of Millville and not exceed my authority or the scope of the zoning bylaw or, or the building code.
Okay.
I, you know, there is a thing called double jeopardy. I'm happy to go back and address every one of those issues again. I don't think any of it would change a great deal. And I carry forth from one experience to the next on trying to improve. How I interact with people so that maybe we can. You know, steer the bus sideways a little earlier in the process and get them to. Work with me to resolve it before it becomes a bigger issue, you know? No, I'm not perfect and I don't appreciate you trying to. You know, put, put me in a light that says that's how I approach things or that's how I represent myself to the public. Cause that's not accurate at all.
Okay. No, I appreciate that clarification, cause you mentioned that you thought. Your customer service skills are pretty good and, you know, I think that you can't correct what you don't acknowledge and I think that there is. Room for improvement in that area.
There's always room for improvement.
And then something else that Andrew said was, um, working with Peter on that a little bit and you, you and I met, we talked about like a training course or something like that. And I think we left it with what Andrew had stated, which came out of the last. Process where you would work with Peter a little bit more. Andrew, is that what you were referring to?
Yeah.
Okay, so has any of that happened or, I don't know, like a weekly one-on-one where. You talk about, wow, this guy got really mad and I was surprised that he got this mad because I'm looking at the code and this is what he should do, but for whatever reason, this guy just got mad. And then you can maybe talk through like, well, what did he say? And then what did you say? And then the back.
I try and work with Peter on anything that I think is, uh, a difficult situation. I let him know, um. As clearly and concisely as possible what, what the issues are. And he has a very good ability to cut through a lot of the. I don't know what the word is, but, um. The, the gray area and the fluff and ask the pertinent question as to what the issue is and. And, and what the town's responsibility is and how are you going to resolve this? Um, I came back from court the other day and said, you're gonna hear something about this. The guy's gonna complain. Um, because he was disappointed the clerk magistrate didn't find in his favor. I don't know if you ever spoke with Peter or not, but. I think that, uh, Peter would tell you that not much crosses his desk that he hasn't heard about before from me. And we've discussed what my approach is and, and I encourage him to give me some guidance because. Um, the more heads, the better the solution to the problem is. That's been my, you know what? I may be the department head, but I'm just, uh, a peon in the pantheon here and, and he's the town administrator. So that's always been my approach from the day he walked in here and from before we got here.
I don't have any other questions. Andrew or Todd?
I'm also.
Okay. Okay. Well, thank you, Lincoln, for joining us this evening. Appreciate your time and. We'll see what the next steps are.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lincoln.
Thank you.
So, Tom, I'm glad you hung around because I think we have a situation. And that is, um, I think someone needs to follow up with Mr. Fitzpatrick. And, or his boss and say, these are the hours we're looking for. And I thought maybe like seven thirty to nine thirty, Monday, Tuesday, and then something in the evening on Thursday. And say, can you work these hours? And if he can, then we can consider him. But if he can't, then we've only presented one viable candidate from the building inspector search committee. And then.
And you said, and can you, uh, you said seven thirty to nine thirty on what?
Yeah, I think in the mornings, like at seven thirty, nine thirty, Monday, Tuesday, and then a Thursday evening.
Well, what I, what I just asked you to do, Jennifer, is you have a, you have a coverage schedule. That has covered seven to twelve, Monday, Tuesday, Monday through Wednesday. So we're actually asking this, if we would be asking Mr. Fitzpatrick to have less hours. Than the current building inspector now does, as far as coverage.
Okay.
That's, that's, I mean, we have, according to Lincoln, uh, he's there Monday through Wednesday, seven to twelve. And I believe he comes back in on the evening, Sunday or Friday. So if we're looking Monday to Tuesday, seven thirty to nine thirty, we're only looking at four hours there. We've got an eighteen hour schedule for inspections and stuff, so. Um, I guess, again, as we, as the BISC went through our processes, always level and equal. Um, to see what, what's available. I suppose the biggest thing, and, and I will take your direction one hundred percent. Uh, is just to see what, how, when and if he would be there.
Yeah, like, so if we're average, so right now, so we have seven to twelve, Monday through Wednesday as a minimum, so we have fifteen hours. We have to find availability for fifteen hours from Mr. Fitzpatrick, and if he doesn't have that availability, then we've only put forth one viable candidate.
Correct. I will do that follow-up.
Perfect. So, and I guess, so we can't, I don't know, Andrew and Todd, what you think, but I don't think we can really move forward this evening any further. Um, until we know that we have a choice. Um, and then from there, we can move forward with that information. Do you disagree or what do you think?
No, I think we need to wait in here, what the other guy can cover.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so, and, um. Yes, I just wanted to say, I'm, I'm sorry for the current building inspector that this is going on and on and we were hoping to have this done. Earlier and it's not, and I do understand that that's a difficult situation for him, so. Okay.
Cause it does, it does, it does show some of his fortitude.
Yes.
And it's not for lack of trying by the search committee to get candidates throughout that period. So we, we, we moved around to get folks to even consider an interview and here we are.
Yeah, okay.
Some of that, just to, for an update, some of that, some of that did involve people who didn't want part-time. You know, they looked at it as, you know, more of a full-time position with a minimum of twenty hours if you kept benefits on to it. So that kinda limited down people that were applying, um, just so for the rest of the board.
Okay. Alrighty.
Thank you. I will get working on that.
Perfect. Thank you so much, Tom. Have a good night.
Have a good evening.
Thanks, Tom.
Okay, so, um. Dustin was here and then he left. I just emailed him to be like, come back. Um, so why don't we go kinda back into the order of the meeting? So two was announcements. Peter, anything there?
Uh, so I, I really don't have much, except to remind folks that BMR is having a capital subcommittee. I think it's a public hearing. I haven't seen anything official on it or I couldn't, couldn't find anything, but it's Thursday night. I'm not sure of the time, so just a heads up to people that they're trying to do a public session. Uh, right? If I recall, that's what they talked about when we had the meeting last week. They're gonna do something this Thursday evening for the public to talk about what they're thinking of doing.
Yeah.
Um, or what they're evaluating doing in the near term and long term regarding facilities. Uh, so it's important that folks pay attention to that. It, what was presented to the joint folks. Um, showed that there's some real money that's being talked about.
Yeah.
Longer term, so it's important folks to pay attention to that.
I'm just on the town's calendar and it's not there?
There, that's right, yeah.
Oh, we'll have to wait and see. Okay. Any correspondence?
So just what I sent you all late in the day that came in today, actually, I sent you just some things that are for your information only. Two pieces, one regarding, um, uh, well monitoring that's taking place on Providence Street. It's a board of health matter, um, there's continuing well monitoring over there. And there was also another board, board of health and, uh, basically CONCOM. It was a hydraulic spill that didn't get into the groundwater purportedly. And the engineer or the reporting entity that was in that correspondence thinks that all was cleaned up and is fine. And no further action need be taken, but that was on Hope Street. And I just shared that with you all because, uh, it's important you, you're in the loop on something like that.
Okay. Okay.
But again, no action. It's a board of health type of thing that they would be more concerned about.
Okay, and then any minutes?
No, so no minutes available. Uh, we'll keep plugging away at that.
Okay.
Yep.
Um. Anything on, well, I guess Dustin's, I hear, Board of Health, so I guess, do we wanna talk about this amongst ourselves? Um, the COVID update, I mean, the numbers are up, obviously, we had to move our special town meeting. Um, if you wanna talk about a mask mandate policy discussion, I did listen to the Board of Health meeting. And they're talking about a potential mandate. Nothing has been done yet. Um, I personally, for now, until, you know, I don't feel like we're at like, you know, scary levels yet. So I guess the flip side is, one, do we wanna put a mask mandate in before things get scary to prevent the scariness? Or do we wanna wait a little longer and see how these numbers trend? Um, with the holidays, people are together and indoors more, so we're definitely gonna see a spike, so. I, I, I'm, could go either way. I could leave things as is. We leave the head of each facility and let them say. You need to wear a mask in the town hall. You need to wear a mask senior center. You need to wear a mask at the library. Or do we wanna take any action? And I'm, I'm really comfortable either way at this point.
Pretty sure everybody's aware of my position on masks. I think it should be up to you regardless. I don't think, I don't believe in mask mandates, so. Leave it up to personal choice. But that's.
So that's a little bit in conflict with your attendance at the special town meeting.
Right.
Okay.
It's not really a conflict, I just didn't go.
Right, but, so if we were to have a special town meeting, would you think no one has to wear a mask with?
No, if you, if you mandate masks at the meeting, then I would wear one. But I don't think the townwide, we need to make a mask mandate.
Oh, God, okay, okay.
I think it should, I just think it should be up to each individual board. I don't think the board of selectmen should go townwide mask mandate.
Okay, no, that's, and that's how we are right now and I'm, I'm okay. Okay, Andrew?
Yeah, no, I'm good. Um, just one thing, just so I can understand. The, for the boards to make the mask mandate, where's the authority from that? Where does that come from?
Um, Peter clarified this for me, so this is basically the, the board, the man, the, um. I guess whoever's in charge of like that building. So like Peter's in charge of the town hall. So Peter says at the town hall, you need to wear a mask. So by us not taking action and agreeing that Peter has this authority. Peter does the town hall. And then for the senior center, it's the, you know, council on aging, that group. Says, you know, we're gonna have masks or we're not gonna have masks. So we are okay with them having that authority.
No, no, I get that. I'm just wondering where the authority to, for the boards to impose or not to impose mask mandates comes from. Do we know?
So, yeah, I think you saw something from council that described, um. That you, you are, you are the ultimate policymakers in the town. By the actions you, you take in order to lack thereof, and I don't, lack thereof is not the right word, but just. You know, allowing that, the setup, the situation that's happening right now, for example, as Jen just described for town hall. Uh, I've been doing that for the last year and a half, uh, setting up how we do what we do. For allowing access to town hall, the staffing we had in the early parts. And now that it's, you know, we're still using an ice cream window, but you, you, some folks do come in and if they're coming in, they need to wear a mask. That, you know, we're doing that to keep folks safe and all the other reasons. Uh, council on aging has their reasons, which are not dissimilar. Uh, the library trustees who run the library do the same sort of thing. That all works. Doesn't require the board of health. Board of health can have that authority and say, jeez, everybody's gotta wear a mask walking around town. If they so choose to do that, but, uh, you know, from my understanding, they're not interested in doing that and that's fine.
Yeah.
You know, they, but the authority in a public health crisis, they have a lot of authority, um, that they could exercise. So anyway, you are the, you know, the policymakers of the town at the end of the day. Whether you make that policy by a vote is one way. Another way is just to, uh, you know, allow for things to continue on that you're aware of and, and that's kinda what you're doing here. Without objection, so.
So just, so I can clearly understand, so the authority for them to do these mandates or not. Comes from the fact that we're in a state of emergency, the town.
Uh, I can't answer it specifically that way. Um, I'm sure that's part of it, but. I will resend you the council's review of the policy of masks.
No, no, I, I read it, wasn't exceedingly helpful. That's why I was asking.
Yeah, yeah.
Do you wanna have a conversation with council? Do you want to have a conversation with council? We could certainly.
My, 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 my thing is, and has been for a while, is lawyers are opinions. I'd rather have specific codified law to read from than to have opinions because that's what it basically boils down to, so that, that's why I was mainly asking, but.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, so consideration continuation Millville State of Emergency, when does the state of emergency expire?
So the Board of Selectmen back at the beginning of the pandemic determined that Millville was in a state of emergency as a result. And that's not been lifted by you all, you guys voted, or the Board of Selectmen voted for that, it hasn't been lifted. Massachusetts, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts also was in a state of emergency. That state of emergency of the Commonwealth has been lifted back, uh, I'm gonna say in August. You know, they might start it up again, I don't know, but, uh, anyway. And I think the, the question is whether you think that the state of emergency, not that that does much, does allow for some access to resource, financial resources, you know, FEMA related and so forth, MIMO related. Whether you are uncomfortable in continuing on under the current circumstances. Current circumstances are that Millville is, you know, it showed its, um, the rates of exposure, uh, positivity rates, I guess it's called, um, they've been trending upwards the last several months and remain at the top of the region, uh, the last numbers that Sherry sent around this afternoon. Um, would show that Millville is still the top dog, above an eight percent positivity rate. Same quantity of positive cases of twenty-three in a most recent two-week period, so not a lot of improvement there.
Okay, so in my opinion, I think we leave the state or emergency through, at least through flu season, because I think now things, like between flu and COVID, that we're kind of hitting like the double whammy time. Um, I do think we should revisit this maybe in March to lift for like April one or May one. Provided that we, you know, we have the bump with the holidays and flu and then maybe it kind of phases out over time. I'm hope, and I'm hopeful that that happens and then, so that's my opinion, but Andrew and Todd, what do you think?
Do we know what this allows us to do and if we've used those options?
It hasn't, we haven't. I can't equate any, uh, state of emergency to any actions the town's taken or resources. But we've availed ourselves of resources, I think it's more of a, you know, a formality here. And so I put it there and I was hoping we'd have Board of Health to talk about it a little bit.
So maybe we leave it and invite them next time and we can have them go first. Maybe, so, um. Peter, I think for B three and B four, because I know there's a change, but I don't know what that means. These next two, maybe we can have, um, Dustin or Sherry attend the next meeting on December twentieth, and we can ask for updates on those two.
Sure, all I'm just, uh, all I know about the nursing service has changed, they were using a, a nurse, public health nurse provided by the town of Sutton, and the town was being invoiced for those services. Uh, they've gone back to the visiting nurse, uh, association of Milford, uh, which the town has used in the past and it's, looks to be a more reasonable cost and better service. Uh, and it's a board of health, uh, decision, so that's all I know on that.
Okay. All right, so can we have those at the, on the next agenda to Peter? Okay, great.
Yep.
All right, so new business, so we will go to six B, so licensing approvals, so. I have a stack here, Peter, of like many, 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 many licenses.
So the real key is there's a, a one pager with an addendum to it. And so that one pager is the memo Sherry put together to me and the Board of Selectmen to, today, which lists out the, uh, licensees, what their license is, and the status of the information required to, uh, complete the license. And only one at the bottom, Marty's Fine Wine, which is an all-alcohol liquor license, uh, has a pending item and the pending item is just a business certificate that the town clerk is supposedly being, uh, a- asked to, uh, provide tomorrow. So that's the one pending, what's not on the list is Millville Motors, which is a class-two license, um, which they did complete their materials and I think I sent, uh, separately later in the day. So my, my recommendation, these are all, uh, existing licensees, these are licensed renewals. Uh, Sherry did an awesome job of pulling all this together. The materials you see are copies of the checklist of each of the licensees, the types of things that are required to get it done. Uh, it requires a number of folks to be involved in that, um, and get it done in a timely manner. Also requires cooperation on the part of the licensee, who are all very cooperative in getting this done. Then separately, you have copies of the actual licenses that are issued. And as in last year, in a similar environment, the board voted that the chair be authorized to sign the license on behalf of the board. And so that would be the recommendation here, so my recommendation is that you, um, move to approve and you could list out each one of these with the licenses that they have.
Okay.
Uh, Marty's Fine Wine, subject to the completion of the pending item.
Okay.
Add to the list, Millville Motors is a class-two licensee.
Okay.
Which is a complete package.
Okay, uh, so, um.
And that you, the chair, be authorized to sign on behalf of the board.
Okay, so Millville Motors has a class-two license?
License, yes, so it's for.
And their package is complete, I thought I saw that, okay.
Yep, you did.
Um, all right, because there's a lot of them, I'm not going through them.
It's a big effort, it's a lot of work and Sherry, Sherry did an outstanding job.
Okay, so then I think what would probably make sense is to do like, read all the ones that are complete and have that motion. And then do a separate one for Marty, for Marty's and say, you know, pending, you know, provided they deliver everything. So when do you think they're gonna, Marty's is gonna get their things in?
It could be as early as tomorrow.
Okay.
So you would, I would inform you, you know, when that one's ready for your signature.
Okay. Okay. All right, I feel like when there's a lot of reading, I always get locked in to do it, so I will make a motion that the Board of Selectmen approve the following license renewals and authorize the chair to sign for them, and the licenses are as follows. The Millville Tavern with a common Victwaller license, am I saying that right, Victwaller?
Yes, Mill, Mill Tavern Pizza.
Oh, Mill Tavern Pizza, uh, common Victwaller license?
Victwaller license, yep.
How you say it again?
Victueller.
Victueller?
Yes.
Okay. Georgia's variety store, all alcohol retail liquor license. The Potbelly Pub, all alcohol liquor license, a common Victueller license, a pool table license, an automatic amusement device license, and an entertainment license. The Polish American Club, an all alcohol liquor license, a pool table license and entertainment license, a common Victwaller license, automatic amusement device license. And Uxbridge Auto with a class-two license, Andy's Auto and Sales with a class-two license, and Millville Motors with a class-two license, I'm looking for a second.
It's okay.
Thank you, Andrew. Any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay. And I will make a motion that we authorize Marty's Fine Wine for an annual license renewal pending the completion of their items for the license. And the license is an all alcohol liquor license. And that we further also authorize the chair to sign for that license.
Perfect.
Looked good. Thank you, Todd. Any discussion?
Yep.
Yeah.
So, and this is what, the third time this year, I think, that they've been late on a license? I don't know, it seems like the, every license or anything they have to get approved for, they don't have it prepared or they give it to us hours before a meeting and I'm frankly really sick of it. Um, it's just, it's unprofessional. I mean, it, it, this is a known thing, they do this every year.
Yeah.
Like, this, this shouldn't be a thing where they're late on it at all, like, every other business can get it. But then, and that's really just discouraging.
Yeah. So, I hear you, Andrew, like it is kind of annoying, I mean, you know, it's like when, so I used to work retail and people would come into the store on Christmas Eve at like four o'clock and be like, you don't have anything in the store. I was like, oh, is it a surprise to you this year that Christmas comes December twenty-fifth? Like, you know when this is. So, um, but I guess the impact to us to give them a day or two is not really significant and the impact to them if they were to deny this, like they'd be out of business. And.
This is for next year, so they'd still have a while to go.
So are you saying you would approve it on a later date or?
Well, once they have everything together, yeah, that's, that's what I'm saying.
Okay, but they might have it tomorrow. Do I have to vote on this again where I could just, if they have anything tomorrow, then I can just sign it? It can make my life easier, Andrew, I guess is what I'm saying.
No, I, I, I see that, it's, it's the main thing of just keep constantly giving them extensions for stuff and giving them, approving it with allowances of, oh, well, once you get it ready, once you get, you know, I mean, it's, for me, it's just kind of like, you, you kind of have to set a standard.
Yeah.
We don't want every company business to do this too either, so.
No, totally, because if they, what if they all ask for this?
Exactly.
Well, then I guess we pitch it to the next meeting, right, we'd have to wait. Um, and then it would be, they'd be in trouble, because this is for December, January first, basically, they'd be hosed, so. Um. Well, since we're having the meeting in December twenty, we are pushing things to, we can certainly, I can withdraw my motion, we can do this at the next meeting. Want to do that, Andrew?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll withdraw, Todd, are you uncomfortable with that?
Nope, I'm fine with it.
Okay. All right, so Andrew, I will help you make your point and make my life more complicated, because I'm, I'm gonna have to go down there twice to sign it, no, it's okay. No, but it's a good point, so we should let them know, we have deadlines, this happens every year, so, okay, so I will withdraw my motion. Okay.
Thank, thank you for.
You're welcome, Andrew, I want to be supportive, like, I can say yes to this, so, and it's, and you're not wrong, right, you're not wrong. Okay. Snow emergency declaration, so. Um, this is just to, so we can easily declare snow emergencies over the next couple of months. If we have a winter like we did in fifteen, we could, I have a picture of my oldest then, she was six. She was not short for her age and the snow was over her head in our yard, there was so much snow that year. So, um, we need to do this, so. Peter, what's the motion on this, just to, just to declare a snow emergency?
Yeah, I think you would just, uh, uh, move to institute the typical snow emergency declaration. I don't know of, of any precise wording that's been done in the past, I don't recall that to be the case. But you just by doing the snow emergency declaration then allows for, you know, the police to, you know, ticket people who are parking in the roadways overnight when the plow guys have to go out and clear the roads, that sort of thing. That's really, um, my understanding of it.
Mostly just a parking ban?
Yes.
More so.
Okay.
Yeah.
With that parking ban, Andrew, have to be stated as well, or is the parking ban a subset of the declaration of the snow emergency?
Uh, I think it's just this, that we declare the emergence, the snow emergency and that's incorporated in that, yeah.
Got it, okay.
That's the main, main point of why we're doing it, but.
Yeah.
You know.
Okay, makes sense. So I will make a motion to move to institute the typical snow emergency declaration here in the town of Millville.
Second.
Thank you, Andrew, any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, done. Okay, streetlight issues policy discussion, so I just want to give a quick update on the person who did, uh, I assume we're all talking about the same person who complained. Um, they are installing a shield, I don't know when that happens, like I told the resident that like, well, like I can ask for this, but I have no idea how long this takes, like I ran on getting streetlights turned on in twenty-twenty and they're getting turned on now, so if it takes that long, like it could have a bright light in your yard for a while. Um, but I guess, I was thinking about this, it's like, so for everyone who complains, we're gonna do this for everybody. Um, so I think, one, I guess we'd have to figure out how much this costs, like I don't know. I hope I didn't just put some, sign us up for something really expensive, I assume based on our annual light bill, it's not outrageous. But then I don't, how do we want to handle this moving forward?
Like, I guess it would kind of depend for me on the amount, I mean, if it's, I think, if it's not an extraordinary amount, maybe, but it, it, it really depends on that for me, that's, you know, if it's like ten thousand for each one, then yeah, you know.
No, we're done, we're gonna do that one and regret it.
Yeah, that's, so, so, I mean, I don't think it's that much, but, you know, it, kind of for me, it would depend on that.
So Peter, can we give you an action to contact National Grid and find out how much it is per shield and like what that?
Yes, yeah, no, I have that on the list. Uh, the only other thing is just really, I think, in a broader sense, whether you want to respond to the onesies, twosies. Because think, for example, this situation, you've responded to one person on a street of multiple people who was complaining about too much light, where we, you haven't queried whether the other people were happy with that extra light. So, y- you know, it does raise some issues that I think when you, if and when there's more of these to be encountered, I think then the conversation might be more meaningful.
Okay.
I just, I'd suggest that we be alert to that, because in this one, all three of you were chasing it down, plus I was chasing it down, plus somebody else was chasing it down, and it was a little bit of overkill to respond to a, you know, the person was very active and I'm not, I'm, you know, great for them to do that and they got results, but, uh. I think it's a broader thing, that's all.
A question I would have too, is how do the screens affect the light, like how does that work, you know, I mean, like? How does it affect?
It just causes it to shine straight down instead of way out, it just changes that, that cone of light that comes off of it.
It's more directed.
Yeah, it's more directed towards the ground and not at the front of our house.
So.
Anyway, yeah, I got your action item, I'll, I'll, you know, I'll report back, yep.
Okay, that sounds good, and we'll do, like I said, so I think maybe for all light issues, we forward it to Peter to handle. So anyone who's watching this, if you have issues with lights, go to Peter, if it's reasonable, like a shield or something, or then we can talk about it, and it's like, I was talking with friends over the weekend and I mentioned like someone's not happy their lights on, like I want my streetlights on right now. So I think most people do want the streetlights on, but certainly if it's inconvenient for one person and there's something small that we can do to make their lives more manageable, then, you know, I want to say yes. Um, if it becomes cumbersome and expensive, then, then we're gonna have to say no. But we'll say yes this, this time and, you know, like you said, fine, no, okay, sounds good. Um, okay, so the cable advisory committee appointees, so there's three people that came forward, so. I guess we just make a motion to appoint them? Peter?
Yes.
Okay, yes, Andrew, please.
This is a five-member committee, I believe, right?
Yeah, so Tim's on it, right?
Yep.
And he's the only one right now.
So you'd be adding three, so you get up to four.
Yep, and, and I think, they have good expertise, um, and so the, uh, the, the deal we have with Charter Communications is up for renewal August of twenty-two, so, you know, this process takes some time. My understanding is the last time they did this ten years ago, they went through quite a bit of effort. Um, overlay on their efforts is some element of ARPA consideration, um.
Hmm, the broadband, right?
Which is for broadband in part, and whether that enables, you know, another participant to come in and play ball with the town. That might, you know, the Verizons or the Comcast of the world, which historically have not been too interested, because the, you know, it's, the customer base isn't significant enough to justify. You know, the customer base isn't significant enough to justify their capital outlay, so anyway, that's just. So, one of the elements that this group will be having to wrestle with, which is an opportunity.
Okay.
But not a given.
What's the, and this, what's the term for this?
Yeah, so the term would be until disbanded, basically, because, you know, it's a contract negotiation. The, it, there may be some follow-up after the contract, new contracts put in place, so really, until you choose to disband them.
I'll make the motion to appoint.
So please, go ahead, make the motion, Andrew.
So I'll make the motion to appoint Sierra Gallagher, Jack Moran and Cole Young to the. Cable Advisory Committee until the Board of Selectmen choose to disband the committee.
Thank you, Todd. Any further discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Andrew, I didn't hear you, did you say aye?
Aye.
Okay, sorry, it's probably just a blip in my, a blip in my broadband.
My power's flicking on and off, I'm waiting for mine to drop.
I know, the, I hear the wind.
Me too.
Um, okay. Any old business ARPA updates and discussion? Do you have anything, Peter?
No, not really, I know you sat in on the MVP. Meeting, and, you know, highway is a key element to that, so we're really trying to work. Get Brian, he's a busy guy, but just to connect with Brian. Because he's key to both the MVP, the Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness, which is a tentacle of ARPA, if you will. And a key, he's a key player in the ARPA part, as it relates to stormwater. And related repair of the road. To any place he did something for stormwater, so we're now about to try and. Back him into a corner and force him to pick the spots and the amounts that he thinks he needs by time period. To start that ball rolling for ARPA, that's all I really have.
Okay, sounds good. Alex, anyone on for public forum? So I guess if anyone's on for public forums, a question, please type it into the chat and. I'll move on to select room reports. Andrew, do you have anything? Todd?
Todd, I've got nothing.
Okay, so I just want to say that I did see the Santa parade on the fire truck, or, you know, whatever, I sent on the fire truck. And I emailed the deputy fire chief, because on the thing that posted on social media, they don't go down my street. And I was like, you know, who do we need to know to get them to go in that street? He goes, we do go down the street. And I was like, well, I didn't know, it wasn't on the schedule. So he's like, oh, we'll update it next year, but it was during Sunday school for my daughter, so we actually drove to. The Chester Hill Community Center, so she saw Santa and she was very excited, because candy canes from Santa are magical. Versus the ones that I buy at the grocery store, which just are not magical, so.
But they're in little pieces, because you can't catch them.
That's absolutely true, but she still thinks that they're magical and I thought that was adorable, so. She's like, these candy canes are the best mommy, even though they're broken, because they're from Santa and since Santa gave them to me, they're magical. I'm like, okay. So. Alex Daywin, step forward with a question? Comment? Hate mail?
I just checked, no, there isn't any comments.
Okay. Peter, over to you, Town Administrator.
Sure, just two things. One, special town meeting, as folks know, did not happen tonight, it was, you know. Postponed until tonight, that postponement has now been carried thirty days to January fifth. The postponement notice, the declaration by the town moderator. Will be posted throughout town and on the town website tomorrow. She came in and signed that today. And in it, it says it will be reevaluated again at the time of the January. Up in, near the time of the January fifth meeting, whether to go for, but it's postponed for the same health reasons as. Why it was postponed until otherwise this evening. Separately, just, I did attend the BMR sub, the Capitol Subcommittee meeting, Jen, you were there as well. And it was a lengthy presentation by their consultant. Where they're looking to put in, like basically, an expression of interest is what I would describe it to. This Mass State Building, School Building Authority. Who then would work with the district regarding a project and the funding of, the partial funding of that project. And the project that they seem to have, you know, fine tuned things down to is actually. Giving up the, you know, this is still discussion purposes at this stage of the game, but they're. Principally selecting. Renovation of some portion of the, of the high school and taking down another half of it and rebuilding. Or building a new, a different half and putting the, the. Grade six through twelve in there and then taking the Hartnett Middle School and turning that into K through five, basically. And doing some renovation there, so that would put back MES to the town. And the two schools over there and Blackstone Elementary and the now admin building, back to Blackstone, so. More to follow on that, it's a multi-year project, but again, it's scheduled, what I understood was there was a public hearing on that. Thursday night to assess the, the temperature in the room, if you will, of folks to doing the expression of interest. And just as, some of the numbers they threw out, how it might impact taxpayers in Millville. If they do that project as they are describing, it would be based on the, what Dave Manzella went over tonight, the average. Says, you know, the average appraised value of a home. It's gonna be five hundred and fifty bucks a year additional taxes for thirty years. Is the kind of numbers they're talking about. And that's all in competition with whatever Millville's Capitol Committee comes up with for facilities. Activities as well, which may or may not now include repurposing of MES. If they go through with that project, so I don't wanna. You know, it's all public, matter of public record what I'm talking about, so, but just in case anybody missed it, I would pay attention to it.
Yeah, and then the only thing I would add is the plan that Peter outlined with. Renovation of the high school and the Hartnett School, that's like kind of their best guess right now. What we would really need to do is authorize a feasibility study, which would be half a million dollars. And they would come in and evaluate everything and say that, okay, based on this, this is really what you should do, so they might say. What we've described tonight is the way to go, or they might say, hey, you know what, you should do this instead. And. Basically, if we went into the program and we decided to, like, the intent as Peter mentioned. So if they said, yeah, we want to work with you, so then we would do the feasibility study, but basically, at that point, they're committing to. Funding part of it, like they're committing to working with us. So we wouldn't be laying out the five hundred thousand dollars, like, hoping to get part. To get, like, accepted into the program, we would be accepted into the program at that point. And then they would say, okay, and here's some. You know, and here's the direction that you should go in, and they would have, the MSBCA would also put, have input into. What we want to do going forward and things like that, and. If we were to get the Millville Elementary School back. That would solve some building needs for us. So, we just kind of have to wait and see, the problem is, I need to know all of this now, and we need to know all of this town, but we don't know this right now. So, that's the only thing that's kind of gated, so. Okay, thank you, Peter.
Thank you.
Anything not anticipated in the forty hours prior to the meeting? Okay, our next meeting will be two weeks from tonight. And I will go in tomorrow and sign, or I'll go in tomorrow. Or Wednesday, we'll see which day is better for me to sign the licenses, and I saw a note from Sherry that they're in a blue folder. Okay, I guess we're ready to go into executive session. So I will make a motion that the Board of Selectmen enter into executive session, only returning to open session to adjourn. Move that the Board of Selectmen enter into executive session per Massachusetts General Law. C thirty A, section twenty-one A three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Teamsters Union Local one seventy. The Town of Millville Firefighters Unit. And move that the Board of Selectmen enter into executive session to comply with our act and authority of any general law. Specifically Massachusetts General Law C thirty A, twenty-one F and G, to review assorted executive session minutes. Looking for a second?
Second.
Thank you, Andrew. Any discussion? Hey, roll call, well, Andrew?
Aye.
Todd? Jennifer is aye. Alex, if you want to make me the host, and then you can. And thank you, Alex, for all your hard work this evening.
No problem.